Okay, call to meeting, call to order for the meeting of the Rockport Select Board for January 11, 2021. And we have everybody present and obviously a quorum. We are still conducting this meeting going through the emergency rule in the pandemic. And we have indicated on the agenda how people can comment during the course of the meeting. But the first item on the agenda is to go into executive session and then we will return after that. Somebody like to make a motion?
Deborah, just real quick, could you maybe give our audience an indication of what time they might want to prepare to return? If they happen to be off our live stream folks?
Well, expect to be back by six o'clock-ish.
I will motion the Select Board to turn to go into executive session per Bill, M S R A.
406, 6E legal matters.
Yeah, excellent. Yes.
So just to, just to reiterate, that was a motion to go into executive session pursuant to one M R S 406, 6E to discuss legal matters, correct? Okay, let's see, Michelle?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I vote yes. So we will pause here and Bill will let us know when we're off.
We're ready. Okay, thank you. Um, welcome back to the January 11th, 2021 Rockport Select Board Meeting. We've ended our executive session and now back in regular session. We have the Town Manager's Report. As the next item on the agenda, however, as you know, I am going to have to leave the meeting to attend the Lincolnville Select Board Meeting. At a few minutes before 6:30, so. If we could go ahead and go with Bill's Town Manager Report, but what I'm going to suggest is, even though this is out of order on the agenda. I'm going to suggest that we now move to the August 10th Minutes Approval. To in advance of the Town Manager's Report because the only people who can vote on those minutes are Jeff, Mark. So you need me here for that. You don't need me for anything else, okay? So if we can move to that and then we'll return back to the Town Manager's Report. Item under Action Items. Does anybody have any, any suggested changes to meaning Jeff or Mark to the August 10th, 2020 Minutes?
Oh, I'll, I'll motion we accept the minutes of the August 10th. 2020 Select Board Meeting at seven.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? No? Jeff?
Discussion and yes.
Okay, Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, great. Thanks for that indulgence there. The next item on the, on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report and again, you're going to see me leave. I've given a couple of comments on the investment policy to, to Bill. And I'm doing a broadband presentation for Lincolnville Select Board, so it's unavoidable. And Denise will be taking over. Actually Denise, you can take over now.
Okay, Bill, the Town Manager's Report.
Yep, so I usually give just a brief summary of what I have in writing and then I always add to it. So I'll just give another brief summary and kind of highlight on some of the important issues in my manager's report that I wrote last week. So we did receive payment in lieu of taxes from the Maine Media College and Workshops for $2,500 and the Center for Furniture Craftsmanship. In the amount of $3,000. Under workers' compensation insurance, so our experience modification has decreased from points 0.79 to 0.77. Which means another decrease in our workers' compensation insurance premium of $8,247. And again, this is a lot of thanks go to our safety coordinator, the Safety Committee, and all the employees for following the safety protocols and. Policies and making sure that we don't have any incidents or accidents. So it's a, you know, it's a true savings when I, when we do all this work. That the board has a, has a stake in as well with the different policies that we put in place. I had sent an email back in December, I think just before Christmas to the, to the board about. Split, splitting shifts for our employees because of the pandemic and the increasing cases of COVID-19 in the state and Knox County and, and regionally as well. Originally, I had that in place for three weeks, which would have ended this Friday. What I've done is I've extended that for an additional two weeks through January. Because the cases aren't going down. We still continue to see increased number of cases. So it's, it's a little, it's a little difficult. Again, we do have employees that will be, that are working remotely on opposite days of those that are in the town office. We've divided the departments up into teams. I had sent that list out earlier to the board so you could see that. With schedules as to who's in the office when. Some of those days, and they're noted on the calendar on the website, the Clerk's Office is closed for an hour. In the middle of the day, 11:30 to 12:30 for lunch, so that the, the one employee that's manning the Clerk's, the Clerk's area can have lunch that day. It's, it's going okay. The office is still open at that point. And so if anybody comes in with code issues or any other issues, then we, we will handle them. Or if somebody's just dropping a payment off or something along those lines, we can accept that as well. But I just want to let the public know, just to be patient with us as we, as we continue to stay open during the pandemic and hopefully not have to close. But still keep our employees safe and not have any one individual department be affected negatively with, with the pandemic. We are actively adding site material to the new Rockport website, which has not launched yet, but will be hopefully by the end of this month. Again, it will not be totally complete when it launches. We'll still be adding material constantly to that site. So keep that in mind as well. Hopefully at the next, next meeting, I'll have a launch date for that. The property at 280 Rockland Street that was a tax-acquired property. Went, went out to bid and we did not receive any bids, if you recall, back in November. That is going back out to bid again currently, so we'll have that hopefully receiving some interest this time around. We did have some contacts from people after the closure date on the bids that were interested in it. So we've reached out to them with the bid package as well. So we should have some, some interest in that.
What's the deadline on that, Bill?
You had to ask that Denise.
Oh, sorry.
I think.
It might be if people are listening and interested.
I, I want to say I put a deadline of February 4. They certainly can get the packet here at the town office. And if, if it isn't on the website yet, it will be posted on the website.
Somebody actually stopped in last Thursday and picked one up while I was there doing warrants.
Oh, good. So yeah, so that, that is available and it will be advertised in this week's printed Curry Gazette as well.
Okay.
And it'll be advertised for a couple of weeks. So we can get the word out. And again, some of those were sent directly to people that had been expressed interest before. And now the Clerk's Office is now, Tax Collection and Clerk's Office is now. Keeping a list of people when they call in that, that ask about tax-acquired properties, so that we have a running list going.
Well, that's a great idea.
We are talking with Camden wastewater officials about the wastewater treatment plan upgrade that's being planned in, in Camden. As you know, this has been planned for quite a while and they did receive bids and they have awarded that bid. And so we're working on what our costs are and how we will be funding that cost and those sorts of things. We had one meeting last week that was a pretty, pretty fruitful meeting. I look forward to getting all that hammered out.
And part of that, I take it is the retail versus wholesale.
A different topic, but yes, we're, we're working with that as well. Yep.
Meaning for those people who are watching, we've been talking about wastewater. Wastewater and how much we reimburse or we pay for our wastewater to Camden and whether we in effect pay for that on a. Retail or wholesale rate and that 20-year contract is up for negotiation and is the subject of the negotiation we were just talking about.
Yep, exactly. We'd intended to have an agenda item tonight about the Budget Committee vacancy. However, we're waiting for some completed committee application forms for those that are interested in the position. I did not have all of those, which is why we didn't put that on the agenda. So we'll have that on the next agenda. As well as having those people in attendance, so that they can introduce themselves and the board can make that appointment.
Who? I'm a little confused on that, Bill. I know that we had talked about people that we knew, but who, who actually, isn't it the clerk's responsibility to get them their. Forms if they're interested. I mean, I.
Right, and those forms have been sent to them and we, we just haven't received them back yet.
Okay.
From those that expressed interest that were on the ballot. So. Some updates from the live, yep.
On the Budget Committee topic, we don't have our dates yet. Do we have what we need to set aside for Budget Committee meetings?
I would expect that that will, that calendar will go out Wednesday.
Okay.
So I'm just, I'm just double checking the dates now.
All right, great.
Onto the library. So for the nine days that the library was open in December, there were 11, over 1,100 visits. Which is pretty impressive. At no time did we, did the library staff have to turn away people because of their, the 10-person limit. Except for, I think, opening day, they might have had to have people wait a little bit. But there've been, been lots of good comments about the library and the space. And so people are enjoying the space and enjoying the library once again. Which is, which is fantastic. The elevator inspection was complete and we do have the license, the elevator license from the state. So the elevator is in operation and the lower level will be open to the public on Wednesday, I believe. And in speaking with Library Director Ben Blackman earlier. Over the last few days, we've been asked, we've been trying to determine when we can open again for Saturday hours. It didn't make sense to do that when we first opened because we had two holidays that were, were built into there. But at this point, we have the staffing that will be able to start Saturday hours on January 23rd and the library will be open from 10 to 2. So four-hour block of time in the middle of the day. And we'll be staffed appropriately to allow that to happen. So that's all good news on the library front and the staff is doing a, a good job of. Acclimating to the new building and learning the different systems and, and all of that sort of thing. So. On the comprehensive plan, so I've been working with Orion Thomas and Bill Napower and they're going to be reaching out to the Complan Committee to schedule. A meeting soon to restart that process. Obviously, this will have to be through Zoom. And because that committee is such a huge committee, from Orion, it was that he's putting together kind of a, a process. Where hopefully the committee can be divided up into smaller groups and work on smaller parts of the plan. Individ, with those individual groups and then come back to the committee with that work being. I'll say in draft form, but bringing it back to the committee so that they can then look at it from a full committee perspective. I think this is probably a pretty good approach to be able to do this during the pandemic and hopefully we can get a lot of that work accomplished. That's, a lot of it's just data collection, updating data, things like that. Looking at goals and the like. So hopefully a lot of that can be, can be accomplished in the meantime until, until we get through the pandemic.
That's great. Denise, I'm signing off now.
All right, thanks.
That's it for my report. Any questions?
Real quick, on the, on the comp plan, somewhere in the building, there's a. Eight and a half by 14, pretty big thick Excel document that.
Yes, we have it.
I'd love to have a copy of it so that I can refresh myself those with the notes that I took from a couple of years ago. In order that I can add value at a point in time. Based on those notes, because they went a long way to getting some of that cleaned up.
Yep, we've, we do have that and then we'll get you that, Jeff. Just making a note now.
Anything else on Bill's report? Anything for Bill? Next item is public input on non-agenda items. And these are comment to be directed at issues that are not on the agenda, not under discussion on the agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome at the direction of the chair for each agenda item. Further comment will be granted only by permission from the board. All public comment should be brief and to the point. Bill, do you have any?
I did receive a, a comment early today that gentleman Stephen Bowen, I did forward it onto the board. But he wanted me to read this at the board meeting tonight, if that's, if that's all right. I mean, submitted it as a, as a public comment for the meeting.
And for a non-agenda item?
Yes, this is for a non-agenda item.
Okay, I guess not that, but go ahead. Unless anybody else has an objection.
So basically, he says, and it is somewhat lengthy. Members of the Select Board, I come before you today to express my grave concern with regard to the town's use of the January and February edition of the Rockport resource. To advocate in favor of the proposed short-term rental ordinance. The 2,200-word article that appeared in the edition authored by the board chair was not an information item or update. But was rather a one-sided argument in favor of the proposed ordinance without any dissenting views described. Despite public testimony providing plenty of rationale for opposition. The article, article puts forward one biased opinion about this controversial matter after another, and if any mention of opposing views is made at all in the piece. It is to minimize or poorly and or inaccurately characterize those views. The board chair is a citizen of the town is of course. Welcome to share her opinions on this matter as we all are, but what is gravely concerning. Is the use of a public taxpayer-funded newsletter bearing the seal of the town, which is written, edited, printed and mailed at public expense as a vehicle for what is essentially political advocacy. My tax dollars are being used by the town I live in to lobby me as a citizen to support a controversial matter that has come before citizens. That is to come before citizens for their vote. This is entirely inappropriate and if isn't outright illegal, it is certainly legally suspect. Public dollars cannot be used for political advocacy in this way, pure and simple. The Rockport Town Charter, which I had a hand in drafting many years ago. States that, quote, "It is the policy of the town of Rockport that the proper operation of democratic government requires that public officials and members of all boards and committees. Be independent, impartial and responsible to the citizens. That public service not be used for personal gain and that the public have confidence in the integrity of its municipal government," end quote. There is no way that the article in question can be read to be anything other than a blatant argument in favor of a controversial matter still to be decided by Rockport citizens. It is far from the independence and impartiality that the charter calls for. If you have any questions of this, I've taken the liberty of attaching an annotated copy of the article along with my notes identifying. What I believe to be areas of clear bias and partiality. We live in a time of unprecedented mistrust in government. Members of the board know full well that there's a growing sentiment in Rockport that the quote fixes in, unquote. On this matter, that the board at the behest of their personal friends and nameless special interests is ramming through an ordinance proposal that does not represent the views of the town. To solve a problem, it has struggled to identify with anything beyond anecdote and hearsay.
Bill, can I just stop you? I, and you're welcome. I want to, how much longer is this? It's, I didn't get a copy of it today.
Yeah, I forwarded it late this afternoon. That's another, just another couple of paragraphs.
Okay, because I'm, I'm a little concerned. It's being brief and to the point and I think we get the point.
Yeah, I know.
So do we need to hear more?
I, I'll skip ahead a little bit. In response to this impropriety, I would ask that the board take the following three actions. One, that the board issue an apology for the improper use of this taxpayer-funded newsletter for advocacy purposes. Acknowledging that its actions were inconsistent with the standards of independence and impartiality called for by the Town Charter. Two, that the board adopted clear policy going forward to prohibit the newsletter. Or any other taxpayer-funded municipal resource being used for this purpose in the future. Limiting its future use to the unbiased and impartial reporting of information of interest consistent with the standards described in the Town Charter. Three, that the board offer opponents of the ordinance, and there is a large and growing group of these citizens, citizens organizing as we speak. The opportunity to rebut the claims in this article and next issue of the newsletter. Opponents should be given equal time to present their views. In response and to have that rebuttal distributed in the exact same manner as the original article. Once, just a couple of sentences to finish up. I thank the board for its attention to this important matter is my hope that Rockport can move forward and have a healthy debate about the ordinance in question. Without the town throwing its considerable weight and authority behind one side or the other. The town is called on to be impartial and I hope that it will be. Again, that's from Stephen Bowen from Cross Street.
Okay, thank you for that comment. I think we'll decide, we'll, we'll take that up at a, another meeting or discuss it further, but not tonight. And Bill, if you could re-forward that, I, because I did go back through all my emails and I don't have that.
Okay.
Okay, next item on the agenda, amendments to the agenda. Okay, uh next item on the agenda, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments?
I have none.
Okay, next is the consent agenda and we have um two items on that under general assistance donations. Should we take those? I guess it's all one consent agenda.
It's all one consent, yeah, that's how it works.
So we have two very generous um community members who've donated two thousand and four hundred. Separate donation of four hundred dollars to the general assistance fund, which I thank you um those out there who've done that. And uh meeting minutes of December fourteen, twenty-four. Do I have a motion to um?
The board approved the consent agenda as presented and thank the two anonymous donors. Obviously, for the two thousand dollar and the four hundred dollar contribution to the general system.
Okay, um we'll do a roll call. Michelle?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Uh Jeff?
Yes.
And me, yes. And Deborah's not here. Okay, so that's approved. Um next, uh action items. We've already approved the August tenth minutes. Um next is to act on investment committee bylaws. Bill?
We, we have some December fourteenth minutes to approve. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, so um I can speak to the uh investment committee bylaws. There are very, very few changes in those and we do have Mark Schwartzman with us. Who is the chair of the investment committee as well. He's joined us. But I'll just touch base, in your packet, you have the changes for the uh bylaws. And a couple of the changes that we put in there are the ones that we have been adding to all of the bylaws under section three. Where it says, meeting minutes shall be recorded and public av- publicly available. And then there was a, a change by the. Investment committee under section four meetings. That they added a sentence in that said such me- meeting may be held by consent of the committee. I'll skip the red part of the sentence for a minute via electronic conference call or similar means if for some reason it is impractical for the committee to meet in person. Obviously, the intent of this was to allow them to meet remotely. And we can do that now under the governor's executive order, but once that executive order expires. Uh no committee or board can meet remotely without a change in state law. That being said, there are several uh bills in the legislature for this session to change state law. So the thought here was that we would just add the red section, which I added uh after the fact and I um actually at, at Mark's suggestion and then I ran it by the attorney. Um and added, if allowed by state law. Uh that way, we don't have to amend the bylaws again, should we, should the state law change and we can hold remote meetings. So I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
And then the other change is under section eight, um which is one that the select board has requested of all bylaws, which is um. The blue word in your material, it says, but shall not be effective until approved by the select board uh as for the proposed amendments. So Mark, I don't know if you had, uh Mark Schwartzman, I don't know if you had any comments on the bylaws above and beyond that, but I think that pretty much covers it.
No, that's uh, that's very good, Bill. I appreciate it.
Do you have a motion? Motion to approve the bylaws?
Go ahead, Mark.
I move the board approve the investment committee bylaws as presented or amended after any discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay, and I think we didn't have any amendments. We took them as, I mean, other than as they're presented to us tonight with those amendments. Um okay, any discussion? Uh let's vote. Michelle?
Uh yes.
Uh Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Denise, yes. Okay. Great. Next is the act on investment policy. Bill?
Yep, so here, I'm going to turn this over to Mark Schwartzman because um he and the committee are the ones that were um really dove deep into this policy. And um have the changes as recommended. So I will turn it over to him. I will note that. The town's attorney did review these uh recommended changes and uh has no issue with them uh as far as uh. Being compatible with state law for investments and the like, so.
Okay. Mark?
Okay, thank you, Bill. It's uh, this is again, uh there's a fair bit of cosmetic change embedded in the document. But there are some substantive changes as well and the intent of, uh I, I, let me start by saying. These two documents go along the third, which is an RFP that we've also been working on concurrently. In order to go back out to bid on this, we've had the same investment manager for the town for about fourteen or fifteen years. It seems like. Before I got here, let's put it that way, so. We've decided that it's time that we go back out to the market and see what we can do for investment management services. And since we were doing that process, we figured we best uh spruce up our other documents and these are the two that need your approval. The investment policy itself is several, as I say, cosmetic changes, but also some substantive changes. That really have to do with what is the heart of the policy. And that is how the investment manager can invest the money that they're entrusted with. And the basic concept here is two things. One, loosening in a sense their ability to do things. That are more contemporary, like invest in mutual funds and ETFs. And potentially lower the cost of the investment management services that we receive. And the second is to tighten things with respect to reporting so that we have reporting. Uh very tightly confined by asset class and we know what is happening. Uh with each element of the funding that is out for bid at this point, so. Uh I, I'll leave it at that. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at it. The, the changes, the substantive changes are really are reflective of either. Uh personal experiences that the board members have had or. Uh experiences that the board to take in total has had with our existing. Uh investment manager with respect to reporting, for example. So I'll open it up to questions if, if there are any.
Now, I understand that overarching it are also state laws that regulate what, what we can invest in.
Uh no question and, and that uh to Bill's point is why the town attorney reviewed everything. We, we of course have our own opinions, but we have to live within the law.
Which would tend to be conservative, I would assume.
Uh absolutely, and you'll note that we have uh in the. Equity classification categorized things as investing in investment-grade securities, for example.
Were there changes to the proposal that uh? Were offered up? Bill, I think, or didn't uh?
Yes, uh she's given, she's given me some comments um with additional changes. Um section, section one, the background information. Um the first paragraph in the actual policy. Where it talks about um. The town operates on a select board manager form of government with a five-member board. It says the town manager is the town's chief operating officer and is appointed by the chair and confirmed by the board. That's not exactly the way that it works, so that it should say, should be edited to say the town manager, the town's chief administrative officer. And is appointed by the select board. But that, that's a, an amendment that she caught when she was reviewing it. Um and then there was another one on, let's see if I can find it. On page twelve, I guess it's not a page, on page, section nine, just above section ten, reporting. Uh the last sentence, um where it says adjustments to this policy may be made periodically. My recommendation is that we strike through that language and then on um. On the last page, we're talking about under policy review and adoption, section twelve. The last sentence in that paragraph says this investment policy sh- shall be reviewed periodically by the treasurer. Or investment committee and may be amended by the select board as conditions warrant. So I think that probably covers. The amendments instead of having the sentence in that um, that other paragraph that I had just talked about. I think that covers it. So just a small, two small issues.
That's fine by us.
And the um, is the scope indicates, I'm just sort of new to this in terms of what are. Where the money comes from that's part of our investments. Um it refers to cemeteries, Weedman Healthcare Trust and wastewater?
Yeah, the, the wealth management um company that handles our, our investments now, these, they're just for the trust funds. So this is money that's been left to the town for specific purposes for cemetery upkeep or the, the Weidman Healthcare Trust Fund. Um is for very specific purposes, so this is money that's been left to the town. Uh in those three different categories. So it's not anything like our general checking account or anything like that. Yeah, these are trust funds that are uh that we don't trust, we don't touch the principal for the most part in, depending on what the trust, how it's set up. But uh, you know, use the interest for those um purposes that are identified in the, in the bequest.
Okay, so it's sort of a narrow category of um source of money. What, what is the general? I, I don't know if the better question is, what's the principal? What's the dollar amount of the principal roughly or the income?
Mark, do you remember what the value is?
The principal is always a tricky question. We, we have a reasonable answer for it, but I can't give it to you right off the top of my head. Uh the current balance, uh the last I checked, of the three, of the three buckets is about a million and a half dollars.
Okay. And then that spins off roughly how much income for the town to use for these specific purposes? Is that? I'm not trying to put, I.
No, it's.
My head around what this is all about.
It's a fair question and, and on, on average, like, like everyone, we try, we try to get between five and eight percent uh out of it a year. So a- and you may, you may have been involved uh every couple of years, we get a request to. Uh take some funds out for the cemetery upkeep, for example, and, and that runs in the two to ten thousand dollar range. On an annual basis. And doesn't, we didn't, we never get anywhere near the principal on, on any of these, frankly.
Mm-hmm. Okay, great. Thank you. Um any quest, any other questions?
No, just a comment. I mean, I know there was significant amount of work that Mark and the, the group put through uh on this with Megan, so. Uh certainly appreciate all your efforts with that.
I'll move that the board approve the investment policy as amended.
And I'll second that.
Great. Any, any further discussion? Uh Mark?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Denise, yes. Thank you, Mark, very much. This is.
Thank you.
Thoughtful document.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, next is act on award of public works truck purchase. Bill?
Yep, so in your, in your packet, you'll see that the town, we had put out uh to bid a um, what, what I'm going to refer to as a wheeler. Which is a. They're called double axle dump trucks, but that means that there's actually two axles on the rear of it versus having one axle on the rear. Um in total, they have three axles, so it's just the way that the industry classifies them. Anyway, this is appearing before the board because the purchase for the cabin chassis is higher than a hundred thousand dollars, which is our purchasing policy. Um guidelines, so. The board uh should be acting on the purchase of a cabin chassis and the recommendation, you'll, well, you see in your materials that the board received three bids. For the cabin chassis, ranging from a low of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand ninety-four dollars. To a high of a hundred and thirty thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Um Mike Young, the public works director, and I are recommending that the board award this purchase to Dagel and Houghton. From Herman um at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine fifty. This is, they're, they're not the low bidder, and the reason we're recommending that we don't go to the low bidder is that the experience that we've had with Dagel and Houghton. Um for other service uh for trucks that we uh, that we currently own has been impeccable. Um same thing can be said of Freightliner of Maine as well, but they are the high bidder as well. Um and this is all of the same truck, so it is exactly the same truck um from these three dealers. Um it will be constructed and, and built um and then. And then shipped to us where then we will in turn uh take that to uh HP Fairfield. Um and they'll uh equip it with the plows, uh wings, Sanders, headgear, electronic equipment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. To make it into a plow truck. Um the board does not have to award the equipment bid because it's under a hundred thousand dollars, but I put it in the. Um bid tally, so you can see what the equipment costs, which is the seventy-three thousand seven hundred and eighty. This is in the current budget. Uh we have the lease purchase payment budgeted in this year's budget. Um so we have, we are um fully capable of executing the purchase and, and paying for it.
They are not the low bidder by only a few hundred dollars, so it's not like we're walking away from.
A little over two thousand, yeah. It's a little over two thousand.
Well, the Dagel and Houghton bid is, is only.
About a thousand over?
Seven hundred and something.
Yeah, it's uh. Yeah, seven hundred and fifty-eight hundred dollars. Anyway, I'll move that the board accept the bid from Dagel and Holden in the amount of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty. For the purchase of a Western Star four-seven-zero-zero FF. Forty-seven hundred SF for the public works department as recommended.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Well, it, it is. I think if you do your math, Jeff, you'll find it's twenty-one sixty-four. For the bid amount for the truck alone, and it's the same if you look at the total bid numbers. Um it's not the eight hundred and fifty-six as presented.
Between O'Connor and Dagel? So is it?
The total bid's twenty-one sixty-four, so. You know, and, and I get the fact that they have uh good service records and stuff and, and the grand scheme of things. It isn't that much in a hundred and thirty thousand dollar vehicle, but we also. You know, this is going to be a tough year, but if it's in the budget, have at it.
I just, just wanted to clarify, Mark, that we're looking at the difference between O'Connor on just the cabin chassis. So the O'Connor cabin chassis is one twenty-eight oh ninety-four. And the Dagel and Houghton is one twenty-eight nine fifty. Okay, so yeah. Yeah, so what is the eighty, it is the eight fifty-six, and I will note that we actually budgeted for a. This came in under what we expected the bid to come in under.
It's always nice.
With, not by much. I'll, I'll say, I mean, our numbers are pretty, we're pretty sharp. I mean, I think we budgeted. Based on a, a two-hundred-and-six-thousand-dollar price tag.
Yeah, they all came in pretty close, really.
They did.
Um okay, so we're ready to vote. Uh Michelle?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Uh yes, my apologies. I looked at the third instead of the second one when I did my math. I apologize.
Nope, not a problem.
Um and Denise, yes. So that's approved. Next is uh act on employee safety mission statement. Bill?
Well, this item and the next item are the uh usual items that we do on a, on an annual basis. The board does. Um the employee mission statement is, comes from the board, uh if you will, and uh has not changed from the previous year. Um that's basically just is the admission statement that will be put into the. Uh safety plan, the employee safety plan and the emergency operations plan as well.
I move the board approve the emergency operation plan as presented.
Oh, see, we're employee safety mission statement.
Yeah, we could do the mission statement first.
Well, I was reading, I was reading death in motion.
Jumping ahead, Mark.
All right, my fingers are getting thicker today. All right, I move the board approve the employee safety mission statement.
It's presented. Any, a second? Jeff, okay. Uh any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Oh, good job.
Yeah. Uh Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Denise, yes. Okay, yeah, thank you. Well done. Next is act on emergency operations plan for twenty-twenty-one.
And the thanks should go to the safety committee and the safety coordinator for both of these items.
Okay.
Just, just want to make sure we clarify that.
Yeah.
Um they're the ones that keep me straight on the safety stuff, so. Um yeah, so the uh emergency operations plan, again, this is uh very similar to the emergency operations plans from previous years. And they are, it is a very thick document, as you saw in your materials, your printed materials. Some of the notes that I will throw out there in this is that, um, normally we have a, a one day, uh, safety, employee safety training that's done with all the employees, and we close down the buildings and the operations so that all the employees can, uh, attend the training. Obviously, with the pandemic, we can't do that this year because, you know, we can't have more than fifty people in one room, and we don't have a large enough space to put twenty people to have socially distance. Um, so, the safety coordinator is working on, uh, other methods of trying to deliver that safety training, whether they're online methods or, or whatnot, so that we can make sure that that continues to get done. Um, we did have, also had a tabletop emergency exercise that was originally scheduled for May of twenty twenty, but was canceled due to the pandemic. Um, we're also hoping to reschedule that at some point, um, again, depending on when the pandemic and, and all this stuff gets rescheduled. There is a required training, uh, called the ICS Overview for Executives and Senior Officials, and it's in-person classes that was canceled. Um, and this is done through NOX EMA. I think, Michelle, you're the one that would have to attend this. Um, I, has, the, the plan, yeah, Denise has done it. I think Jeff, I know Jeff and Mark have done it. Um, the plan was to have you, Michelle, um, have the class, uh, talked to you by our EMA Director, Jason Peaslee, the Fire Chief. Um, so we need to ma- make sure we get that set up, so that you do have the training. And I'll remind him, so we can get that set up.
Okay, sounds good.
Um, changes in this, in this plan this year compared to last year's, uh, are highlighted in your materials, and I'll highlight them here. Basically, this is, uh, the plan is an outside copy, meaning it doesn't have any cell phone numbers listed in the calling tree. Last year, we had cell phone numbers listed, uh, so we're trying to protect those. Um, we also added the, uh, rest of the select board members' names below the chair's name on the calling tree. And we listed positions in the plan, uh, throughout the plan versus the persons, so that instead of William Post, uh, being in the plan, it's the town manager, or, uh, instead of Linda Greenlaw, it's the town clerk. Uh, so that when the plan, when the personnel potentially do change, we don't have any issues with having to.
Makes sense.
So those are really the only changes that, uh, are in the plan from the previous year.
Bill, I just had a question on page six of this, the demographic information. It looks like it's from twenty fifteen. Didn't know if there's any, um, more updated information we might want to include, or if that impacted. I don't think it impacts the plan, but didn't know if we might want to update that at some point.
Yeah, we're, we're working on that. I mean, as the census numbers get done as well, then we'll have more information that will come, that will come forward through that. So, kind of have to wait for the information to get updated before we can update the information.
Okay, sounds good.
You have a motion?
I can make a motion on that. I move the board approve the emergency operations plan as presented.
Second? Mark seconded. Um, any discussion? Right, let's vote. Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Denise, yes. Okay. Okay, now we move on to.
I was just sorry, Bill, there's a couple signatory pages from these last few documents sent around that we've all got to sign off on.
Yes, we have several documents that need signatures from tonight's meeting, so if you can make a point of coming into the town office and seeing Diane, uh, or me, depending on which, which day it is, um, and there's, there was a red folder that's on Diane's desk that has the documents in it, so that you can sign those.
Okay.
We'll make sure we let everybody know that they're here, the staff, so that they know where to look.
Okay, that's it for our action items. Now we have a discussion item, parking task force update.
Yeah, so the parking, yep, the pack, parking task force, I think, is met two or three times since the board's last meeting. Um, so I wanted to give you an update as to what, where, where we are and what we're working on. Um, as I think we mentioned the last time, uh, the, the task force was looking at potential areas for future, um, parking areas or parking spaces, and we have reached out to some owners of land, um, in Rockport um, to gauge interest as to, you know, what it is that they're planning on doing with their property or the like. Um, some of them have had structures on them, others don't have structures, they're vacant land, so we're making progress in, in that regard. Um, I will say at this point, we haven't had a lot of luck in identifying anybody that's willing to, uh, discuss potential, um, sale of property or leasing of property or the like, uh, but we're still working on it. We still have some other, uh, feelers out, if you will. Um, we actually met today, the task force did, and we reviewed a map that, um, it's a, it's a, it's a map that was put together by Orion Thomas, who's our, uh, one of our planners, and it shows, um, where public parking is located. Um, we kind of started it centered around the, the Opera House and have worked out from there, um, and, and to try to identify all of those spaces. Um, this will eventually, obviously, it's still in a draft form, but what the, what the goal here is, is to have this as a tool for people that are visiting Rockport, um, or coming to events in, in Rockport. When we get back to normal, if the Opera House has an event, this can be the type of thing that's on the website for, for people that are coming to an event. They know where to park. Um, uh, they know where, if it's busy near the Opera House, for instance, that they can park somewhere else that's within easy walking distance, uh, something along those lines. Um, it also will be part of a, um, community profile package that's being put together by Brian Dankos, our Economic Development Specialist, um, just one piece that will be put into that as well, that would, um, be helpful. The, the, the whole community profile package would be helpful for visitors, current businesses, and potential new businesses as well. Um, and the map will allow us, meaning the task force members, to, trying to identify, um, as we've said all along, other areas where we may be able to gain some spaces, whether it's squeezing a couple more spaces in on our street, whether it's potentially, um, changing some streets to one way. Uh, we've talked about this at length. We're, we're, we will be getting to the point where we want to talk to, um, residents on some of those potential streets, uh, to, to get their feedback. Um, so we're trying to methodically go through our list of, of projects, and we're, we're getting closer to that. Um, one other development that we've been working on is Kramer Park. Those of you that aren't familiar with that, um, it's, it's a really nice area, uh, of course, and I think it's underutilized, uh, by, by people. Um, and I had walked it with, uh, Public Works Director Mike Young. I want to say last March or something along those lines, um, to try to see what we could do to, number one, uh, clean it up a little bit, make it more accessible for the public to use. Uh, and number two, to see what we could do for potential parking, whether it's, um, permit parking for, uh, those at the harbor that have trailers, or those at the harbor that may, uh, leave their car for two or three days, um, or, or something along those lines, or whether it's, um, additional parking for events in, in the evening, or something along those lines, uh, or events at the harbor, or events, uh, in the area. So, um, Mike is, uh, Mike is, uh, marking some of the trees that can be trimmed. Uh, we will need to add some, some gravel to the, the drive that goes in through there. Um, there's some work that needs to be done, but it's pretty much work that can be done with our crew. So it doesn't cost us that much mon- any money per se, other than through the forced labor account, but it would also create a more attractive park experience as well, so that we can, there are some picnic tables back there that overlook the falls, um, that sort of thing, that we can, um, kind of use it as an attraction as well for visitors to the, to the town, uh, as well as the residents that live here, and there is a walking trail that goes out from that park as well. So those are the things that the parking task force has been working on, um, over the past, uh, couple of months.
Great.
Any questions or comments on that?
And Bill, remind us the, um, study that, uh, Gartling Dorsky's doing on the one lot, what's their schedule for coming back to us with?
Um, I'm just, I'm pausing because I was going to look it up. Of course, I won't be able to find it. But we're looking, I mean, I know from, trying to remember what, um, what they had said. Okay, I think I found it. So they're hoping actually to have the finished parking lot designed this month, um, with, with designed reports, et cetera. Um, that will be submitted to me, and then it will go to the select board for a presentation, either end of, uh, end of January, first thing in February, first meeting in February. And then based on that, um, they would begin preparing the bid documents, so it could go out to bid, so we could get a, a price for construction. So we're pretty, we'll be pretty close to that, uh, in the next few, well, next several weeks, I would think.
Okay, great. Um, all right, I guess that's, anybody else have anything more on the parking discussion? Thank you, Bill, for that. Um, so, m- moving on to select board liaison reports?
Sorry, I was on mute. When's the next meeting, Bill?
For the task force?
Yes.
Parking, the parking task force? February first. I'm just looking at my calendar to see what time, because I don't remember. Uh, it's February first at one o'clock. And it is by Zoom.
Yep, add me to that list if you would, please.
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, so liaison reports. Um, Michelle?
Yeah, I'll go first, uh, because it's been light for the holidays, so I don't have any other updates to give.
That's good. Um, Jeff?
Yeah, one for both Mark and I, the capital invest, uh, capital committee met. In fact, I'll tell you what, Mark, you can keep that one. All right, the pathways committee met the other night, however, I was, uh, watching the ZBA hearing, so I did not attend. I'll get notes from that. The harbor committee, uh, has not met of recent, however, they had an invitation where a bunch of them were going to a workshop on a particular environmental subject. And, uh, that's about it for me.
Jeff, can I, on the harbor committee, I've had a number of people ask me about all the big holes that are really starting to just seem quite large next to the, uh.
That would be for Public Works to, and, and for, uh, the harbor master to tackle.
Yeah, we, we are, we are looking at those, and that's something that we've got a, we're working on a plan to try to alleviate that problems. I mean, essentially what's happening is the water comes in, the sea wall forcefully, and when it goes back out, um, it pulls the sand out from underneath the, uh, the, the, the surface, causing those holes, so. Um, yeah, that's, that's, we're looking at a couple of different, um, solutions, if you will.
Mm-hmm. And the granite blocks, when you see, it almost looks like some of them, you're not really sure what they're resting on. Is that, are, are we looking at the engine? I mean, I know the steps got totally jiggered up by some of the storms, so that the, the big granite blocks are all sort of cattywampus now.
On the, on the sea wall itself?
When you leave, um, the beach, so you're looking at that wall, which has gaps in where the granite blocks are, and then you walk up the, those steps that got totally disarran- you know, rearranged by a storm, um.
Yeah, we're.
Then you guys are all.
We're looking at, we're looking at all of that now, and we actually had, we actually had the engineers, that was part of their work, um, through the grant that we had, uh, that, that identified the parking lot potential as well, so.
Okay.
We are working on all of that, yes.
Okay, great, just a number of people have asked. Um, all right, uh, Mark?
Okay, Jeff, help me out if I miss anything. Uh, on the fifth of January, five-thirty, the Capital Improvement Committee met. They elected Alan Mitchell as the Chair and Joyce as the Vice Chair. Um, I think it was attended by five members. I think I might have missed somebody, but as well as, uh, Megan, Bill, and myself. Um, we talked about the list that was compiled, and they worked off of, and we, uh, went out for the bond. Uh, anyway, we talked about that list and what was taking care of that last year. And then, you know, adding two things this year by virtue of the department ads to Bill in November, and then Bill in December was going to get things ready for the Capital Improvement Committee for January. Uh, as to an updated list, I think Bill, you can correct me later, I guess, if I'm wrong. But, uh, you basically said that that needed to be done ASAP, so that they, uh, could have something to look at for the upcoming budget information. Uh, we went over the line kiln and how Legacy Rockport had taken the lead on that. We talked about the infrastructure bond and what had been done and what had been, uh, put off until the spring. Uh, we talked about the town office paving, which wasn't done, so that they could do a better job at the fire department because of drainage issues. And, um, um, a heftier, uh, or a better layer of paving right in front of the fire station, uh, due to the heft of the trucks, so that they didn't, we don't enter the future with, uh, more hollows there. Um, we talked about the harbor grant and the paving down there to be done in, in twenty-one. Uh, talked about the library being done. We talked about the streetlight project being ninety-nine percent done. And I think Bill said there was a six or seven year payoff. Um, and I think, I still see periodically lights that are on at eight-thirty or nine o'clock in the morning on a, even if it's an overcast day, it's probably light enough for the, for them not to be on, but that's a work in project, uh, work in progress. Talked about the old Rockland Street, um, the sidewalks and that type of thing being done in the spring. Um, I will, I, I didn't add to it that day, but, uh, there are sidewalks that go almost up to Route seventeen heading west, Bill. They're, they're overgrown in people's yards. You know, a few feet off the road, but there are still places where sidewalks are visible. Um, and I think you guys had mentioned that it only went up as far as where, uh, uh, the Rockville Street intersected it right there. Uh, Walker Park was done at a cost of forty-four thousand, not the four hundred that was originally, um, estimated. And sometimes I get to learn how to write better, so my notes will be more legible.
We are having two more meetings here in the next, uh, couple of weeks in order to bring this all rep, uh, to a close, following the prioritization proposals from.
Yeah.
And there was some discussion, although it might be low, but at some point, we should talk about how best form an Opera House foundation type activity. Uh, because the.
Yep.
Capital line items in this year's plan, or, or any year's plan for the Opera House are quite substantial. And, uh, it may be worthwhile getting some grassroots activity going around the foundation to help.
If you remember, if you remember correctly, Jeff, we talked about that with the, uh, Cemetery Association too, I think, um, um, coming together with a, a nonprofit, uh, for donations. Um, and it might be worth something for us to look into, uh, with regard to the crematorium, uh, the crematorium, sorry. Uh, I got my hats on backwards, but the, um,
Colimbarium.
Colimbarium, thank you.
Back just in time.
Yes, good. It might, might be worth us looking into the monies that our investment committee said was there, and that we hardly ever get near the principal of any of them. So if there's a chance that we can finalize, I think we're only like thirty, thirty-five thousand off from the colimbarium. Um, but if we can finalize that this year, that would be perfect, and get that off the plate. But anyway, on that note, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, um, let's see. Parks Committee and Legacy Rockport sort of are merging together in both being interested in working on these historic signs around town. The museums in the street, is sort of the, the name of it. Um, with some interesting ideas of, you know, having folks out in the, the different villages of the town. Um, you know, having that be part, it wouldn't be a walking tour, but it'd be a, a tour. Um, the ZBA met on, uh, the, the sixth, and, um, they didn't reach a final decision in terms of their findings, but I think everybody has sort of can see the writing on the wall, but they'll be meeting on the twenty-first. sort of can see the writing on the wall, but they'll be meeting on the twenty first and will do their formal findings and issue a decision. Um, Opera House Parks Committee are still haven't met yet, so that's it. All right, anything, anything else? Are we ready to adjourn?
Um, I could say a few words about broadband.
Oops, sorry, yes.
Okay, um, so, uh, the, um, you know, we were, we have been at a stage where we're trying to do education about broadband, and then COVID hit, and, and for all the horrible things that COVID represents, it has really helped on the educational efforts in the sense that people, you know, realize how important internet is to them and so forth, and so now we're in a situation where a few years ago, we were trying to reach out to towns to see if they were interested in, you know, working on broadband, and now we've got towns coming to us saying, hey, we're interested in some regional approach. And so that's why I was on the Lincolnville Select Board meeting tonight. They had asked me to join that. And I'd also talked to Northport today, and I spoke to Hope, and Hope is, Hope wants to join the Camden Rockport Task Force, which wouldn't be the Camden Rockport Task, Broadband Task Force anymore. It needs to be renamed. Um, and as I understand it, although I have not spoken to them, Bill, but Audra has said she has spoken to the town administrators and and, and so forth, of Rockland and Union, who have also indicated interest. So anyway, all I can say is the broadband is really picking up a lot of steam in terms of a regional effort, and that regional effort, and everybody I talked to, you know, we were talking about, you know, the potential of regional utility, not doing anything that's going to, you know, raise funds for taxpayers, but not, you know, not raise the mill rate um, and so forth, so I, you know, I think it's all good news on the broadband front.
Great. Okay, anything else? All right, what a motion to adjourn.
Motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right, Deborah?
Uh, yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Denise, I vote yes. Um, all right, so see you on the twenty fifth. Thanks.
Good night.